Sorry, we're starting late. I'm waiting to get one of the guys that can't make it tonight on the phone. If we get him on phone and they can vote, that's viable, isn't it? We've done that before, I know with other zoning meetings and with other meetings that I've been to. So, can we start without him as long as they come in before we make any?
We're not making any decisions, I suppose.
All right, I'll get through the minutes of the last meeting. Does anybody want to be introduced as new people here tonight or? Amanda?
Sure, I can. Hi, everybody, my name is Amanda James and I'm from Morton. I'm with Salt Creek one.
I'm Colin Smith, I'm with Amanda, also with Salt Creek.
Colin and Amanda, right? You want to introduce yourself, Steve?
I'm Steve Peterson and a concerned landowner from Tama County.
Thank you. Ah, we've got an agenda in front of us. Let's call the meeting to order. I'm the temporary chairperson sitting in until we get our crap together. For lack of better words, till we get another appointment after we have our new supervisors sworn in. I believe after the first of the year, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And this is Wade Mitchell. Him and I have been coming to these meetings very faithfully and Darren was here at the first one we had and he hasn't been able to make it back. And like I said, Craig's loading hogs. He says, "We probably don't want to hear the words he's using while he's loading." I sent my load of hogs and Darren is in the comment and I'm hoping he'll call me back. Uh, let's start out with a pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for the nation where we are indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, can I officially call the meeting to order? I'll read through the last meeting's minutes. Zoning meeting on ten-ten of twenty-two at six-thirty. Zoning members present were Wade Mitchell and Doug DeVore, absent were Darren Teason and Craig Sash. Meeting was opened with a pledge of allegiance. The meeting was postponed one week because of a publishing error. Twenty-five members of the public were present. As there was not enough zoning members for a quorum, no votes were taken. Discussion began with turbine setbacks. Worth County setback was discussed. Topic of total turbine height, including blade extension, repowering, reissuing permits and property lines or dwelling lines were topics of discussion. Gruney County is in the process of updating their wind ordinance with a factor of five setback possible. Public comment on setback being at property lines as to not restrict any future buildings or tree planting was a topic of discussion. Participating landowners may waive the setbacks on their own property if desired. Manufacturer's safety manual should be available to the public. Worth County ordinance is thirty-six pages long. Tama County's present ordinance is only six pages long. Expiration dates on conditional use permits need to be added. Discontinuation or decommissioning needs to be present at the time of building and construction, not fifteen years later. Many topics of strengthening or putting some teeth in it are needed. The next meeting and a possible public meeting are to be on the next meeting's agenda. Meeting closes at eight oh five P M. Any questions or corrections or comments? Sounds good to me. What do you want to approve the minutes as they were read?
We approved the minutes as written.
I think I can second it. I can't make a motion, but I can second. All in favor, aye. Aye. I'm going to make a few comments before we get into our moratorium subject. If we decide to, I'll try calling again here. If we go ahead and decide. I can't do two things at once. It is. It's hard. Now I can have an auger running and I can run across the yard and feed the cattle and listen to it.
Selected molting.
Come on Darren, you need to pick up. He might be fixing something or out of the combine or something. I don't know.
Would you like me to try to recall that connotation for you so you can?
Yeah, please.
Do something besides molten.
Maybe try texting.
You mean attempt? I did try texting, yes. If either Craig or Darren calls, put them on speakerphone, please. What we've got on our agenda tonight is to, excuse me. Once again, put out a possible motion for a six-month moratorium on any new industrial wind projects. And if, and approve that if we have our votes here for a quorum, bring that to vote. And then also the same with the, not the same. A twelve-month moratorium on solar, industrial solar projects. Because we just feel that we need to give ourselves time to get through one thing before we tackle another. And since there have been some county landowners already been approached by solar people, I think we need to take a lesson from Lynn County. I believe they approved, the board of supervisors approved some solar projects over there, industrial solar, and now they're getting sued. The board of supervisors are there, they're putting it on hold and they've got problems too. And then if we get this far, I want to discuss possible dates to set public hearing for this industrial wind. I had a question for you Laura, if we get that far. Can we have a public hearing on both? A six-month moratorium on wind and a twelve-month moratorium on solar on the same night?
I think you can have them on the same night, we just.
Separately.
One at seven and one at seven fifteen. Two different discussions.
All right.
And two different motions if there's action taken.
And since we're not getting a response from our other members yet, what do? My initial thought was on, on having a public hearing that's, the way the law is set up, we have to have it on an agenda that we're going to talk about a public hearing and then we have to approve it. Then we have to have it. And we got to have at least two and possibly three Laura, is that right? And if we get to that point tonight, my thought is, do, my question for Wade and some of you folks here that are here to listen and offer insight. Do we really want to have a hearing before the holidays? The first one, knowing full well that we're going to have a new supervisor in after the first of the year? That might. Might change the attitude a little bit of the supervisor, it remains to be seen. Or, and do we, you know, start our hearing in January? And then have another one a little later in January after the holidays when things would slow down a little bit? Everybody's hopefully done with harvest and. Or do we plunge ahead and try to have one here as soon as possible before the holidays?
I think you could have your public hearing, but maybe you could decide whether to recommend it to the supervisors before or after the new supervisor. Because is it, I think it's only one, isn't it, for these guys? I think the supervisors is three. These guys is only one or two, I think, for zoning, correct?
They have to have at least two.
Is it two?
I think, reading some of the minutes in the past, they actually had three years ago. There was a subject that they had three.
For zoning, not for supervisors?
But I, I believe what happens is that they don't have, if the public doesn't show up much, they can wait.
Depends on the turnout, deciding how many hearings.
I'd say with the scheduling and everything, just try to at least get the first one in as soon as you can.
Because that's probably, you'll probably only get one or two in before the holidays.
Because you've got to do those.
But we won't even, but if we don't have another board member calling tonight, we can't get to that point. That's the sad truth. Or how inconvenient truth or whatever you want to call it.
Hey, you're here. Can we put you on speakerphone? Okay, hang on.
Which one do we got?
This is Darren.
Good.
All right.
Thank you Darren for joining us. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, now you can officially start your.
All right, we're going to officially start our meeting. We approved our previous minutes. I had a few remarks about what we're going to do tonight. And we're going to start out with a possible motion for a six-month moratorium on any new industrial wind projects. And I'm asking for a motion to approve that. To, I'm asking for the motion, I guess is what I should say.
Right. I've moved to approve a six-month moratorium on any new industrial wind projects in Tama County.
Did you hear that Darren?
Yeah, I can hear it.
Do you, do you care to second? That's a.
Yeah, if you call me off second.
All right, we've got Darren now as a second, thank you. Is there any further discussion about a six-month moratorium on any new industrial wind projects in Tama County?
If we, okay, if we offered some discussion?
I, I believe they need to bring this to a vote first.
Oh, the discussion before the vote?
Discussion should be before the vote.
Okay, let's do this.
I think this discussion should be only from the board.
This is, this is an official zoning meeting, so a public comment is not actually a necessity. That's what the public hearing is for, I believe. If you, if you would be.
We have to decide that yet tonight. It will be.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Probably before Thanksgiving, we hope.
Technically, public discussion is up to them. They can take votes.
Under chapter twenty-one though, there has to be public input.
At the hearing.
That would be at the public hearing, but at the actual zoning meetings, it is not a necessity. That's what, that's what.
I would disagree with that, but all of.
Well, if you have the, the proof for that, go ahead and.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Um, or at least.
Or maybe at the end, you could take their public comments after it's done, maybe put it to end if these guys would like to.
It's just that public input prior to a vote is sort of a predicate on the whole process.
Okay, did you, did you understand the vote that was being brought forward?
You are voting on whether or not to impose a moratorium. If the answer is yes.
Please, please reword.
Motion to approve a six-month moratorium on any new industrial wind projects in Tama County.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, so it's a new industrial wind project, not current industrial.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Sorry, okay, I misunderstood. I think I did misunderstand what you were saying.
Okay, so we're, are we good?
I didn't mean.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm actually a little confused with the current public hearing, current public meeting right now.
This is.
Yes, but the business part of it is between the zoning members.
Yep, and I.
And if you would have been here at the last meeting or two that we've had, there was a lot of go back and forth publicly. And we, we appreciate that. And we can still get to that later on this evening.
Yeah, no, we're not trying to be competitive. I think I misunderstood or misheard what was going on.
That's why I wanted to.
So, motion's been made and seconded to approve the six-month moratorium on any new industrial wind projects, new industrial wind projects in Tama County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You there Darren?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you say aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Now, we're going to jump right into whether we want to have a twelve-month moratorium on any industrial solar projects, industrial solar projects.
I'm, I'm moved to approve a twelve-month moratorium on any industrial solar projects in Tama County.
Were you able to hear that Darren?
Yeah, I heard.
That's a twelve-month moratorium on industrial solar. Do you care to second that motion or not at this time? What was that?
That's, yeah, that's okay.
That'd be okay, he said. Well, that's a aye. We're lucky he's able to do this. So, it's been approved, motion's been approved and seconded to have a twelve-month moratorium on any industrial solar project. Any discussion between the three of us on this? Any more discussion, Wade?
No, but just that it, it'll give us time because we'll go through the wind first.
Right.
And get that, get a good.
We don't want to get bombarded as a zoning commission.
Well, we want to do a good job.
We want to do it right, the first time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, he's, he ayeed. Motion carried. Now, Darren, we need to set a public hearing on these two motions. These two moratoriums that we're approving tonight, we need to set a public hearing. And Laura, if you could help me, what's the soonest we can do if we got to hold them tomorrow?
Okay, so today is November.
Fourteenth.
I would notice you could probably have it there by Friday, if you call tomorrow.
Right.
So, ten days from now would be the twenty-eighth. So, the soonest you could do it would be the twenty-eighth.
The Monday after Thanksgiving.
We have ten to twenty days.
Ten to twenty.
So, you could do it the twenty-eighth or the.
And heaven forbid that we go into deer hunting because that's a national holiday. No, I'm looking at the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth or thirtieth of November.
That's what I'm saying. The week after that would be deer hunting.
Right, right, opening weekend of December, always has been. You two folks back there are, are either one of, end of November worked for you folks for that public hearing, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth? Twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth or thirtieth, it's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, right after the Thanksgiving holiday.
Depends on if we're deer hunting.
Oh, you got a weekend.
Where are you guys, where are you, where are you guys from? Where are you guys from?
Um, originally from Southwest.
Darren, do you have an opinion on that public hearing? Is there a chance you could make it the last three days of November, one of those nights? No opinion, yeah, because you don't know if you're going to be done yet, do you? Can we bring him in on phoning in at the public hearing? Yes, we can do that. And maybe Craig won't be sorting hogs that night either. Wade, what do you think?
Oh, I'll make it work. It'd be nice after the holidays, but we kind of need to move forward too.
Get one of them. Andrea, my personal secretary, do we have anything on any of those three nights that you were back at home on the calendar?
Your calendar will be.
Yes, Madam Secretary.
I don't believe we do.
I don't think so either. We're having our Thanksgiving divorce get-together on that Sunday, but that's not Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday. Does anyone here have a preference of Monday or Tuesday?
I'd say maybe Tuesday, just because Cyber Monday, there might be people shopping or coming back from holidays.
Oh, yeah.
But now it's like Cyber Week, so people can shop whenever. I'm sure we will clear our calendars for Monday if you pick Monday though.
Tuesday worked for you folks in the back. If we have a Tuesday the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, let's try that. And what time?
It's all right, seven, nine.
Yeah, we'll try seven o'clock.
We need a motion.
Real, real quick for a public hearing, do you want earlier? There could be a lot.
In case there's a lot of people there.
There could be a lot of comments potentially, but that's up to you guys.
Six-thirty works, the last few meetings you had.
Darren to do later.
I wouldn't make six-thirty tonight because the calendar got out.
Yeah. Stay all night too. So, I guess it, whatever works best for you three, if, if seven's better, do it and just kind of set a time limit of, whatever, your three to five minutes, you know, for each person and get a message and stuff like that.
We will, at a public hearing, per usual, have a timeframe. We will figure out how to take, um, comments in order. There will be a timeframe so that we're not there all night long because people do have to go get up and go to work. And it's just fair to the public if you have a timeframe.
Right, everybody gets a chance to speak.
So, suggestion is everybody has their topics ready for public speaking?
Laura, are you familiar with it? Is it three to five minute reasonable?
Yeah, three to five minutes, I think is reasonable.
I think that's, school board, I think we have three minutes. And you know, when we had, we went through COVID, there were, oh God, there was over fifteen to twenty people that spoke on those three, three minutes. And then there were several that we had to read for the superintendent, we had the people that weren't present but wanted their comment or.
And I do believe that most people actually got their comments in under.
Yes, we didn't have to cut anybody off.
Three minutes seems to be okay. Um, I think. There can be, I mean, there can be a, okay, three-minute warning wrapped up in thirty more seconds type of.
We'll figure it out. You still there Darren?
We will try to be.
We're going to have one more motion, I'm hoping. If anyone, I'd entertain a motion for a public hearing on the twenty-ninth of November at six-thirty P M.
Can I enter?
Yes.
Sure. You can set more than one public hearing. You can set it for two days. You could do the, I mean, you could do, set them both, all three now.
Even if we go into January?
Yes.
Wow, you got a calendar there?
The only thing is I'll publish them, but if you're going to do them like three days in a row or three weeks in a row.
Oh.
Let's get one down for sure because we could lose.
Right.
Do one if that's.
Yeah, or is there a reason, like why not do all of them? And then you can recommend it to the new supervisor in January too. I mean, you could just set them all now if you wanted.
I'd rather do one at a time and see what the turnout is that first night. And then we got to feel for.
I'll move it.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, six at six-thirty, we have our first public meeting.
Wade made a, Wade moved that we have our first public hearing on these moratoriums, November twenty-ninth. That's a Tuesday at six-thirty P M Darren. Um, I'd entertain a second if you're so interested, so inclined.
Yeah, I'd second it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded to have a public hearing on the industrial winds and solar moratoriums on the twenty-ninth of November at six-thirty P M. All in favor, say aye to three of us.
Aye.
If aye, okay, no nays, all right.
Doug, would you do the wind first and then the solar later? So, do you want to say like solar at a later time that night or just one after the other?
We'll figure it out when we get there. I would say we'll spend as much time on the wind as people want to spend on it and then hopefully we'll have time for the solar. Just wait and see how it turns out.
If people want to combine their comments into their three minutes, would that work?
I think it could get her done in three minutes, I suppose, yep.
And then once, once those comments are done, you go into the, the solar.
Because Laura was just saying, we'd have to separate it, or your comments would only be on solar? And then we'd go into the wind or vice versa, you decide whether.
We do need to separate the comments.
We need to set a time for one hearing and set a time for the next hearing.
So, do I need, we need to do that tonight, tonight? We're better.
Yeah, both on the same night.
All right, we need to do them separate times. Comes to my attention, our attention. Is half an hour long enough? Forty-five minutes, six-thirty to seven fifteen, seven-thirty? What do you think? Hour? Lost.
I figured we're going to do, yeah, well, at least we got that.
Motion down.
We can get started on that.
Is there a proposed solar, industrial solar?
Or is there a current one?
Current one now. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't, wasn't aware.
I don't think anybody knows for sure.
I think that's what the moratorium's for, right?
For any new, stuff any new.
I believe there's.
Is there a current one?
I haven't heard any, I mean.
There's solar, there's not really most.
About two lines. I, I believe there's about two lines. Um, I'm not positive on that, so that's, that's why.
A, a current project, I mean?
No, no, current project.
Is that what you're asking? Yeah, current project.
Yeah, going forward now.
There's been interest, but no current project.
Yeah.
That we are aware of. Is anybody else aware of?
Amanda would know probably.
Yeah, but it's interest, but not an actual project in.
Nothing's a current.
Oh, they don't, oh, okay.
Then it's.
Then it is a proposal.
They're going to put some down.
There's proposals, there's current projects, so for, yeah.
You're with Salt Creek one, correct?
Yes.
Salt Creek one has been through the conditional use permit process, has it not?
Right, on phase, phase one, I believe.
On phase one of it, is that correct?
And building permits too, right?
And your building permits, so that is, that's a go, clear to go, isn't it?
Yeah, according to the current. But we don't have any solar that I'm aware of.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, I don't know who the.
Ted, right, that's the solar.
We should probably try to get Darren back on the phone so you can go ahead and.
Well, I'm going to hope we want to do before we get you back on the phone.
You mean how?
Maybe, maybe we should.
Well, you heard that there's actually a project to be, if there's contracts, that means they have a project.
Oh, for solar there is?
Yes.
Contracts, is that right?
Not through them, it's through somebody else.
Somebody else.
Okay.
But there is a contract out there, which means there is a project being proposed.
Being proposed.
It means they're ready to spend money on it though.
Correct.
That's.
Which means that you do, probably, you don't have.
Pack together.
Wait for the wind. If you did an hour at a three-minute limit and a hard three minutes, that would only be about twenty people.
If they had the full hour.
You're going to want longer for wind and shorter for solar, probably, I would think.
I believe so because you don't have, you have, the wind is current and a current topic. The solar is a proposed topic that is coming, so I would think.
Would you go six-thirty to eight on the wind? Do you think that's too long?
No.
And then do the solar after?
If it happened to be too long, you could take a recess, but I don't think it'll be too long.
Can you start it earlier if it gets done?
That'd be a good point.
Can we flip?
If you post the time, you have to stick to it.
Yeah.
One comment I want to make here, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong. We as a zoning board can have these public hearings, we can present them to the, we need to present them to the supervisors. Do we not, that we're going to have the public hearing or don't we?
You need to notify them that you're doing.
That we're, that we're having, so we need to let them know before the twenty-eighth or ninth, I mean. Which could be Monday, the twenty-eighth, is that, or the twenty-first, next Monday, right? Yes. But the board of supervisors still have the authority to impose the moratorium, am I not?
Right.
Correct? So, I want you folks. Want you folks to understand that. We as a zoning board recommend these zoning, these moratoriums so that we would have time to update our ordinances. The board of supervisors still have to approve. That's why I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves until we get into January and we have a new supervisor.
You could always split your days and do wind one day and solar another if you're only, you know what I mean, if you needed to. Just to make sure you have enough time.
Thing is, we've got the motion on the, motion in the minutes already that we do, are going to do wind and solar on the twenty-ninth unless we decide to change it.
They have to redo their motion then?
I have one idea. Was it actually that you said wind and solar or did you just?
First motion was just wind.
First motion was wind.
They did them separately, they did two.
Okay, I was just thinking that you just did one and it was kind of generic that you were going to just have a public hearing. I don't know what your minutes say.
My minutes say that they suggested a public hearing for both on both.
Yeah. I think I could like amend it.
Yeah, you can always, uh, strike the motion from the minutes and amend it if we want to. But what do we want to do Wade? Do we want to just do wind that first night?
I think, I, we have no idea how late that could.
Right, let's just do wind that first.
And then you'd have people showing up for solar and then they're.
They never get a chance to say anything. That wouldn't be fair to the public.
If we have one wind, then that, that would give us an idea. And if we have, if it wasn't solar, like you said, we had.
Get Darren back.
Yeah, we'll strike the, so we want to strike the motion to set the public hearing for both wind and solar and just have it set for just wind on the twenty-ninth.
Bring that to a vote.
Well, the first one that we did approve is.
We did do them.
Both, did we not?
Well, the first one we, that we approved was just wind.
Yes.
Right, the first one.
Okay, you have a vote. To approve moratorium on new industrial wind. All in favor, aye at seven seventeen. And then there was another one for solar. And all in favor of that.
Then we've done the public hearing.
You need to read.
Now, the public hearing is what you need to redo.
Right.
Have that, if you choose, you need to redo that and have it strictly on wind.
I'll see if I get Darren back. Now we'll try Craig. Maybe we'll hear some new profanity while he's loading hogs.
I've been watching the elders come lately, so I've heard that all.
You've, you've heard it all. You worked in the F S I office long enough. You've heard it all.
Yeah.
I almost, I almost did this morning, didn't I? Might have trouble getting him back. Let's try Craig. I thought I had a missed call from Craig, but I'm not sure.
Okay, last time, I left Darren a message and then he called back.
And you did call back? You wanna handle this?
I guess in a second, Darren. Well, that is entirely up to you. Do you have more discussions you have in the tech? You're the one that.
Craig, if you can, give us a, give me a call back, please ASAP.
I suggested leaving the same message for Darren.
Let me leave you the phone, I'm gonna let you handle it.